Go ahead and do introductions. We can start with you if that's okay.
Okay. Mary Catherine Moore, Internal Performance Auditor.
I'm Christian Graham. I'm a community member on the Audit Committee. I'm a law student and work for Oregon Public Broadcasting.
I'm Charles Webber. I'm the District Student Council Representative assigned to the Audit Committee. I go to Idyllville High School.
Julie from Edwards Board and Committee.
Michelle DePass. I'm the Chair of this Committee and a Board Member.
I'm James Hansen, District Internal Performance Auditor.
I'm Tim Gillett. I'm Audit Partner with Talbot Corvola in Morwicke. Usually just called TKW. Your independent external auditors.
I'm Dan Miley, Senior Manager with TKW.
And I'm Rebecca Yen, Chief Financial Officer.
Do we want to go around the room?
Well, I'll introduce Caroline really quickly. She is a citizen who I've kind of recruited. She's an auditor.
Community member.
A community, not a citizen. A community member to, we need to have two on our Audit Committee. So I've been working to try to find a second community member. And Caroline has volunteered. So hopefully, we will get her referred to the full Board for appointment following this meeting.
Excellent. Can we quickly go through, through some of that here?
I'm Cheryl Ansel. And I'm a Director of the Accounting Department.
I'm Roseanne Paul, Board Member. Welcome to the community.
I'm Tara Basha, Deputy Assistant for Report.
Hi, I'm Terry Rockford, Communication Department. Working on the technical side of it. Just name my name.
I'll be low with the communications assisting Terry Rockford.
Excellent. Thank you for introducing yourselves. We're going to get started. Oh, we were just saying our name.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Dr. Cheryl Proctor. I am the Deputy Superintendent of Instruction and School Communities.
Excellent. And so we're, this is our first Audit Committee meeting of the year. And so we'll go an overview of the Office of Internal, I'm sorry, Office of Internal Performance Auditor. And we'll start out with a presentation and then we'll move to community member participation on the Audit Committee. And then we'll talk about kind of status update of some of the audits before getting our PSTR, which is the annual Audit Update. Would you like to go first?
Yes, I just remember. Share a quick screen. Okay. So I'm going to be really brief because all of the Board Audit Committee members have already been Audit Committee members before. So I don't have to go too detailed. But for some of you who are new, I just wanted to go over high level what the Office of Internal Performance Audit does. So I have some slides to go over with you here. So we'll go over the purpose and the mission of our office, our authority and responsibilities, independence, objectivity standards, and some key performance indicators. So independence and objectivity. Just to ensure that our office is able to maintain independence, our office reports directly to the Board of Education, you know, primarily through the Audit Committee. And so in order, and by doing that, it helps ensure that our work is independent and partial and objective. So everyone can trust the results of our audit and recommendations. For auditing standards, we adhere to GAGAS. Generally, our U.S. Government Accountability Office generally accepted government auditing standards that we call GAGAS for short, or the Yellow Book. And it's kind of called the Yellow Book because you can see there that it's yellow. It really is printed in that color. You know, creative auditors also have a red book, but we go by the Yellow Book. We do have some key performance indicators. And in case any of you want to come back to our next Audit Committee in January, you'll be getting our first report on meeting these key performance indicators. They were approved by the Audit Committee last year. Again, very high level. Any questions or anything about the work that the Office of Internal Performance Audit does?
So maybe you could explain how the, these KPIs are evaluated?
There's, I could.
Is it too detailed?
Yes, I'll have that in your report next, next month. If that's okay with you. I just didn't come prepared to explain them.
Okay.
Put me on the spot.
I apologize for that.
That's okay. Any questions about our office? Just want to be high level, make sure that you know what our office does. It's different. We have external auditors here today. They're unassociated with the work that we do. They do, they're completely separate.
In this year's audit plan, or just the Audit Committee's plan, will we have discussion with the bond auditors on topics for the following year? Will we have that as a, as a committee?
I think we do have, I think we have, we have a work plan for the year. And I believe we have it scheduled. I just don't remember what Congress and.
So I haven't, so I have emailed out about whether or not we're going to have that joint meeting with the Bond Accountability Committee, the Facilities Committee, and our committee altogether. I haven't gotten any dates or anything.
Okay, but there is a plan.
But it is.
Yeah, so I was told that the Audit Committee would have that on its agenda. Just, it's a huge amount of money, but not just the presentation of, so that it's more than just a board meeting. So we have opportunity to go deeper, but also like what next year's topic was going to be.
Okay. We'll follow up. There is a, you have emails up. Okay. I won't, I won't wait for that.
So the next thing on our agenda.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, if, if no one has any other questions, we'll go move ahead.
Yeah.
To item two, which is the community member participation on Audit Committee. So by policy, we have two community members assigned to this or that volunteer for this community. We have one, again, is it Christian?
Yes.
Christian, and your last name again?
Grant.
Grant is one community member. And we have consideration for a second community member. And she's in the room, so let's be kind. Her letter of interest is linked, as is her resume. And I believe we just need to decide whether to forward it to the entire Board.
Yes, so I, unless you guys have some great questions for her.
Yeah.
You know, or if she wants to speak for herself. But she is a performance auditor at Walton County. And I met her recently presenting at the ALGA conference. And she has a student, she has a child in PPS, and she's also an auditor. So I was really excited to try to recruit her. Her resume and letter of interest has been passed around. It's attached in board books if you want to check it out. And the purpose of the introduction is to have the Audit Committee members vote to refer her nomination to the full Board for appointment to the committee.
That's correct.
Want a motion?
Yes, I would. One motion.
I move that we recommend to the full Board.
Excellent. I'm going to have to second it unless Director Fonsio, Amy?
Yes?
Do we have a second?
I'm not, yes.
I don't think we can hear Amy.
Can you hear me now?
She did. But then I basically weren't hearing her. Yeah, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Okay. So.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Did you say yes to second?
I did, yeah.
So we, we will move. Caroline, can you, or Caroline, can you pronounce your last name for me, please?
Sorry, Caroline Zabitkovsky.
Zap.
Zabitkovsky.
Zap, Zabitkovsky. Her name to the full Board. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm having a day. We get to vote on this now? We have a motion and a second on the table? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those not in favor, say nay. And are there any abstentions? Well, I think we've passed to move your name to the full Board. Thank you for serving.
Thank you for agreeing to join us.
It's a really fun committee, most of the time. I think it is.
It's my favorite.
We're now going to move to the Office of Internal Performance Audit Status Update. I'm sorry, can't have that item open.
Yep. Okay. So we have a couple of audits that we are working on right now. The Hearthead Cancer Audit is an audit that has been going on for a while. I'm almost done with the report. So you guys will get that report in our very next meeting in January. We also started on the Student Body Activity Funds Audit. We are temporarily pausing field work just to give finance a break from their fabulous external audit. And now, once, now that they're done with their audit, they're working on gathering the documents that we requested for this audit. So we'll be picking back up right away on that audit. We have also started some of the preliminary planning on the English Language Development Audit. And Dr. Proctor is here today. I just met with her last week to kind of get an idea of what kind of audit she might be hoping for. So I got that information and we'll be getting started on that in the next couple of weeks. In addition to, so those are the three audits that have already been approved by the Audit Committee. And we will need some more audits approved. We don't have any, in addition to those three, we don't have any more approved. So at our next Audit Committee meeting, I would like to chat with you guys about some additional audits to consider for approval. One thing that I just wanted to mention is that I watched the Board's retreat in the fall where you were talking about aligning the Board's committees with the Board's goals. So I printed a copy of the Board Goals. I'll give you guys a copy as you leave. So you can be thinking about them. But it sounded to me like the Board wants to move towards having the committees aligned with the Board Goals. So just to refresh on what the Board Goals are. So when I give you a call over the next couple of weeks, we can chat about what kinds of audits you might like to see us do.
Okay, are there any other audits in the pipeline besides these?
These three?
No.
Okay. It's not urgent. The ESL audit will probably take about six months. We're just getting started on it. But it is nice to have another audit in the pipeline. So.
You can sort of overlap.
Yeah.
So English language, it's really, English is a second language, an audit of the programming?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We'll do a very comprehensive.
Excellent. Was there anything you wanted to say, Dr. Proctor, about that audit? Or any expectations you have or?
No, just really looking, we had a conversation a year ago, almost a year ago, about what audits were being considered. And it was mentioned that ELD was one of them. And based on coming into the district and having an early understanding of some of the programming problematic practices, we wanted to have a comprehensive audit to understand all aspects of how we are serving in the ELD programming to meet the needs of students, everything. You know, our assessments of entry, programs provided by, you know, teachers, and also looking at data on exiting and how well are we meeting the needs of students and then exiting, exiting them, excuse me, on programs because they have successfully completed the program.
So at some point, children, students will move. I, I hear you want to say something, but students will move or identified in the program, move through the program, at some point exit the program.
Oh, correct. They should not last, they should not last their entire schooling career. Absolutely not. There is, there is criteria for exiting. There are year, year maximums.
And this was part of the impetus for wanting to do this audit, which is that within the last 10 years at least, we are statistically very slow in moving our English language learners out of, you know, focused ELD instruction. But Dr. Proctor, I wanted to ask you, isn't, didn't one of your external reviews that you have had recently also touch on our English language learners? I can't remember if it was, maybe there was a subset of the special education review you had, or was it another one?
No, no review that we had did a comprehensive ELD program evaluation. We looked at, we looked at our instruction and academic through a diagnostic and instructional review whereby we looked comprehensively at instruction. And that meant we were touching on some of the experiences of our ELD students or special ed students. We actually did a comprehensive special education review and audit. But, but we have never focused on ELD and ELD programming.
So occasionally, the external auditors will audit ELD. I did check to see if it was, has been audited. It wasn't this year and it wasn't the last year. So there won't be any duplication of effort in relationship to us auditing it. Had they audited it, then, you know, that would be their work. But I did check the last couple of years. That program hasn't been audited for the single audit in the last few years. So there shouldn't be any duplication of anything.
Is, so wouldn't you do the audit, TKA, is that a financial audit? Or is that also looking at the length of time students are in the program and they're exiting?
No, it's the finance. It's the federal grant.
The federal grant.
So we do get a federal money.
Okay.
So they.
Probably just the expenditures. You're just looking at the expenditures and if there was compliance with all the requirements. Nothing about how the program itself works or whether it's effective or anything like that. It's just the dollars.
Just the dollars. So I would think those two audits would be complementary?
Yes, and no duplication.
Just that they're not looking at the same.
But they haven't done it in the last few years.
Okay. Would that be part of your audit as well?
I will check for all the things as well.
That.
Yes, all the compliance requirements for a federal grant. So if they end up picking that grant to do in the future, I can share with them what I have and might help them a little bit.
Excellent.
So wasn't there a, did we have a running list of potential topics?
We do. We have.
And so maybe that would be useful to circulate as well.
I will email that list out with the Board Goals to all the committee members, along with a note that I want to schedule an appointment with each of you to chat about that.
I think it's worth a second look to, just to see if we're still on, on the right track. I think some things that we need to drop.
Yeah.
Other things we need to add as a result of our retreat conversations there.
All right, well, that's all I have for you.
Thank you. Our final, our final presentation today is going to be the results of the 2021-22 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report by TKA?
TKW.
TKW. The wrong acronym stamped in. TKW. And you can introduce it and take it away.
Great, thanks very much. Again, I'm Tim Gillett. I'm Audit Partner with TKW. With me is Dan Miley, Senior Manager on Your Engagement. And Dan is actually going to do most of the talking today.
So for first batch of documents, it will be the figure package that was handed out.
And by the way, I hate to interrupt, but we, we have not seen this previously. So it was not.
Well, and I was going to also emphasize that this is in draft form. There's still a few things that we're still trying to iron out on both our side as far as a couple of last audit procedures, and then maybe a few last whole things or page numbers, that kind of thing ever coming through. So you're just getting it now because it is hot off.
It literally is. Okay, so it's in draft form and we should expect that there'll be some areas in the report that may change.
But substantially, things are complete. We're not aware of any substantive change at this point in time. Really down to dotting eyes, crossing keys type of stuff.
Okay.
So, but we always like to leave the caveat open until the audit's signed. Things, I mean, new piece of information comes that might change some stuff. But we're not aware of it. Expect, yeah. So we're going to go over this at just a high level. Again, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to stop and ask. So the first.
Question, and this might, how many questions asked now? Is this also coming to the Board?
Yes.
And you'll be able to.
Just because I haven't had a chance.
Yes, nobody's read it.
Yeah. So may I have more questions afterwards?
Yeah, so far, I think it's been the finance staff and the auditors that have read it more than once.
Some good reading, huh?
Yes.
Exactly what it was.
So most of this is actually the district's work. And they put on, they've, they've done a lot of work to put this 300, 200-page document together along with a single audit report. We cannot do what we do without assistance from the accounting staff. So I just want to say that they are very much appreciative of this as we interrupt them during their daily tasks, just trying to keep the accounting going for the district as well at the same time. The first report in here that is ours is a little bit, and it will, it doesn't have a page number. It'd be roughly page 14, I believe. 13, I think.
13, yeah. Okay, there it is, 13. They do have page numbers.
Unfortunately, I, I put in some larger after reports.
I want power versions though.
They don't.
The first thing I'd like to point out is that due to a number of auditing standards that got implemented during the year, which don't necessarily impact the district or accounting, we're just counting audit, one result is though our report actually changed. So just the structure of it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The format's different.
So if you're comparing it to last year, it's not going to look like last year's.
The, there's more or less the same content in there. They've extend, they've expanded in some areas, shortened some others. The main thing to note is that they now put the opinion, what used to be buried, I think, three or four paragraphs down, is now the first section. So they figured that's what people wanted to know, so they're going to put it up on top. Then go and explain, I mean, what the responsibilities are of everybody and what it actually means. So to start with the opinion, as far as we know to this point, the financial statements have been presented fairly in all material respects. So this is your clean dollar health. This is your unmodified, unqualified, clean opinion.
The kind you want to get for housekeeping.
So there's a number of, of terms that people use. Then it goes on further.
Ask a question about that? So that's, that's great. I'm curious what your, you're auditing the, we get this really nice printed budget. And then there is a whole bunch of changes that are made, not a whole bunch of changes, but there's changes during the budget process. And then usually in the spring, then we get kind of an amendment at, to them. So you're, this, this is the, all those things together, correct?
The, the budget is a piece of what we look at as part of what the state requires us to look at for local budget law, those types of things. What we look at, look at is what the district actually spent the money on. And if that's properly reported in these financial statements. So it's a little bit different than the budget. I mean, the budget's what you want to spend the money on. It's appropriations and what you're allowed to spend to. This is what actually happened.
So this is an audit of, it's a look back.
Yeah, so this is a year in the past. We always live in the past.
So, but my question is if, if the budget is what we said we were going to spend it on, then with the amendments to the budget, it's changing, you know, it's moving funds around usually. So then these documents are, they spent the money as they, like, here's how they spent the money without comparing it to what we said we were going to spend the money on?
There are schedules in this document that buy fund. So you have the general fund, special revenue fund, that have those comparisons to, this was the original budget, this is the final budget after all those amendments, this is the actuals, and then any variances within those. So those are the general fund and special revenue funds. That is part of the required supplementary information that's presented after the basic financial statements. Further on in the budget document is supplementary information that contains the budget actual schedules for all the remaining funds. So those, you go back a little bit further. Additionally, if there were any over expenditures, those would be reported in the Oregon Minimum Standards Report, the report required by Oregon State Regulations, which is at the very back of the report.
Which we will get to eventually.
Yes.
So I have to jump ahead, but like on page 26, is that for, for example, the big buckets of what the final approved budget, adopted budget was? And then. Wait, you, you all are saying that actually?
Yes. The one caveat I brought up is that the, that's within the management discussion and analysis, which is while we review it, make sure that all the numbers agree and take and tie back to the financial statements themselves, that is a product of management that we do not provide an opinion of because it's management's discussion and analysis. We make sure that it does not conflict with anything that we're aware of.
I'm sorry. So just to clarify, so on page 26, so I'm, so when I look at this, I look at, this is me. So you're saying what the information on page 26 is not your audit?
What I would direct you to is more along the lines of page, so, yeah, 97.
We're close.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, it's the same document for, this is special revenue.
So on 97 is the general fund. The special revenue fund starts on page 99. Then services on line two. So it is within the report in, in the detail. And it's presented at the appropriation level. So somebody can say, this is what the Board authorized at that legal level? Is it within the legally adopted appropriations? Is that any clearer?
Yes, but something you said earlier, I'm going to go back in the past. So you're saying. that most of the substance of this is not, it's not your, your work, it's the district's work?
We provide an opinion on whether these have been prepared.
So the meat of your work is, well, all the, all the review, but then you're, but I'm just like trying to, like, who's providing, who's providing the narrative?
Three pages that says they're fairly presented.
Yes.
That this is what you.
Okay, this.
Yeah. So, so there is various levels that, of assurance that we provide on those other statements. So on the basic financial statements, that's what we provide our direct opinion on. If you go through the report, there's certain parts of the required supplementary information that we provide no opinion on. We make sure that it doesn't conflict with the basic financial statements or anything that we're aware of. And then there's parts, the budget actuals themselves, that we say that in relation to the financial statements themselves were materially stated. So when taken in conjunction with the basic financial statements, we believe those, those schedules are materially stated.
You are confirming and verifying.
Yes.
The materials that have been presented to you by the district.
Yep.
Does that answer your question? I know it's more nuanced. In terms of what actual work is, that body?
Reading through it, who's.
Yeah. So, you know, we look at all material items within the financial statements. We ask for supporting documentation, perform audit procedures, and to make sure that those are fairly stated.
If I may just quickly, like, there, and it's the context within, are they fairly stated based on, like, Oregon statutes? And in addition, another framework that comes into play is generally accepted accounting principles as well. So when we start looking at what actually transpired, it's what actually transpired in relation to how we budget. That's one aspect. And then an additional aspect, are we accurately, as my team works, puts together the schedules, the financial reporting, like, are we doing it the way it's intended to be?
Okay.
And so when the external auditors come in, they compile, gather all this information, they do sampling, whether testing certain procedures that we say, hey, this is our process for reviewing how we pay employees, or how we process invoices, or certain aspects to them. But a lot of that gets, that's part of statistical sampling, gets pulled to then verify, okay, well, if, if the sampling looks correct, materially correct, and that then must, this financial expenditure, or this expenditure must also be correct. And this analysis kind of cause and effect as it goes through the process. But it, it, it's a combination of several things. Team puts together, it's, and it's not just Dan and Tim. They have a big team as well, and they scour through our files, and scour scenes like, you know.
It's not a, is it more of a spot audit where you're, you're sampling, you're not looking at every single line item, but you're sampling to get a statistical representation of what you've been considering?
It actually all starts with a study and evaluation of internal controls, and where we think the risk areas are within the financial statements. Then we concentrate on those risk areas. Yes, we, it's, we don't look at every single item that they would take. That's what I meant. And in time, it's translate to months, and we don't wanna pay for that. So yes, we take a representative sample of items from various accounts, we take it back to source documents, we confirm certain things with outside parties and so forth, and we test those controls. You've decided we are going to rely on controls, and we have to test them before we can live and make sure everything is signed off and approved, or whatever control happens to be. And then we focus on the risk areas, yes.
And, and, and maybe you were gonna get to this part as well, Dan, and just kind of thinking about the opportunity to create awareness around the process, like, school districts across the country go through this process. It's, it's something that's a very routine process. You have the Government Finance Officers Association, and a variety of other external entities as well that, like, encourage us to follow best practices. So in one of those documents, there's acknowledgement, awards that are given to the district for completing the financials reports under certain specific guidelines of these external agencies' requests or commit entities to do. But also, you know, I think about TKW, and I think about RSM, and as far as like some of the other conversations that happen as far as like, as an external auditor, what are then also, it'd be great to share with the committee, what are also some of the other checks and balances that happen throughout the process?
I have a question. So it's this here PBS enrollment that we did have an possible drop in enrollment during the COVID years. Would this affect the huge amount of money you get from the government because if they hand it out on a per-student basis?
So I can just jump in. So the, the spring answer is yes, but it also depends on how the rest of the state is doing. So because we all essentially share out of the same pie, so at the state level, there is a, a pie that then gets divvied up between districts, and depending on student count. And, and so if there's less, this, less students across the whole state, then that gets redistributed, so it may or may not.
If everybody drops the proportions, then everybody's, yeah, states.
Okay, so with a lot of people transitioning to private school because of the pandemic, this might not affect us drastically?
If that's, yeah.
Depending on how the, the whole state.
Yeah, depending on how the whole state's doing. If it's a single district phenomenon, then yes, it could.
And this seems to be explained by the pandemic, so I doubt it is a single district phenomenon.
And there is information, at least last year leading into this current year, where the whole state saw decline in, in, in student enrollment. So the next year, it's gonna be important to see how do different districts start to rebound.
I don't know if it's a private school enrollment increase, or as much as an outmigration from the state.
Right. The last instance, we gained a representative in Congress, so I think the population's actually growing in order to the whole. So, I don't know. I can state, just in, in context of our other school district clients, declining enrollment is, is a challenge that every school district that we've seen this year, and it's not isolated. You may talk about proportion, amounts, those differ. But I don't know of any of our clients that are extremely happy with their enrollment numbers, and they've been jumping up.
I think that's true, just anecdotally.
Yeah. Just what we've seen, we don't audit every school district, so we only have a handful to look at. But it doesn't seem abnormal from what else we've seen, just in our experience with.
I would agree with that. And did you get your question answered, Julia? Although one question, okay, I mean, but, and then you wanna proceed?
Yeah.
Well, I think the basic question is, whose document is this? And this is the district's document. There's any individuals in here that are on the report. That doesn't mean we haven't looked at every single page in here multiple times, and, you know, are expressing an opinion on, on the basic financial statements and some other supporting documentation. And that's the same way it is for every school district, and actually for every large company. IBM, General Motors, Tesla, everyone to look at. The, the document is, is the representation of management, and then the auditors express an opinion on it after the audit.
So, and in our audit, is actually use two different auditing standards. We have the generally accepted auditing standards, and then we also have the governmental auditing standards, which is similar, but we have a different section that says that we must maintain independence in the district.
Okay.
So where your internal audit, your performance auditors, they can do certain things. We cannot, because we're supposed to maintain that independence. So let's, if we created all of this with no input from the district, we could not issue our report. Because we'd be auditing our own work.
I appreciate that.
So if there's a variance from the budget, that's not, it wouldn't result in you to find even a significant variance, because if they, like, we said we were gonna spend X in the budget, we ended up spending Y. We presented in these documents that we spent Y, and you're saying, yes, they spent Y. Not quite back to X.
If it's an over expenditure, then we report it. Report on, in the report, the Oregon Minimum Standards Report, which comes at the back of the report that Dan hasn't gotten to. If you under expend, no, it shows up in the documents, we don't have to have a finding about it.
You're saying you don't have to have a finding, or?
If you under expend, yes.
So maybe you could explain on, like, page 26, I'm looking at this, maybe everything is wrong. There's the final budget, which is actuals, and there's variance, it looks like, of 87 million under spent. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
But that's not.
That doesn't create a finding for, for the auditors under the Oregon Minimum Standard.
It's not material.
Oh, I didn't say that.
Well, I mean, it is, it does seem material, but I'm just wondering, how, how do we?
Seriously, the, the main focus of our audit is on the fairness of the financial statements, whether they are presented fairly, which most people interpret them accurately. We don't use that word because, you know.
Fairly depends.
The, the difference between the actual expenditures and the budget, we only report on that for Oregon Minimum Standards. The state of Oregon only requires a report on over expenditures, they don't say anything about under expenditures. So even though this might look like a large under expenditure to you, it's really nothing that the state wants us to report on to them.
So if it was 87 million over, it would definitely be in the minimum standards?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And, and it would be a finding?
Yeah. Much, much smaller amounts than that, even if material, if reported in the, in the state report.
If it's an over.
Over is an over expenditure.
And, and the difference is, is that would be a violation of state law, of local budget law. So if you're not violating local budget law, then the state doesn't care, yeah.
The state doesn't wanna know about that.
And to add, there's something very specific to that table. In that case, like, the bulk of it is like the operating, operating contingency. So i- in a way, it's, we didn't have to use our operating contingency throughout the year, so then it just moved over.
You mean that whole long discussion we had about using the contingency?
It was, like, over a year or so, but I don't remember.
That was two years ago, even. I'm gonna ask if we can, are we satisfied enough to move, move ahead?
Okay. So the last thing I'll speak to on our independent audit report is that there's just a reference to two other reports, the report on government, required by government auditing standards, which we made reference to, and the report required by Oregon Minimum Standards, that we reported, that we will get to both of those reports. The next section, which we've already discussed a little bit, is the management discussion analysis. This is the one that if you're not gonna read everything, please read this. This provides not just what happened, but it also has comparative to what was done last year, also some reasons why. So just to ref, reference some of the tables in here.
Is that 17 to 29?
Yeah, 17, yes. That to 29, eight. Yeah, so on page 21, you have the, the change in net positions, the assets, liabilities of the district. Then, at a condensed level, so it's not at all the classifications that we have in the financial state, but this is to provide that high-level overview. Then also goes on later to say, okay, this is why we think things change the way they do. And we always recommend that. It's relatively short compared to the whole document. It provides a good overview of everything, and some of the what, which may be some times more important than the what. After the management discussion and analysis, we have the basic financial statements. I won't go into too much detail in these unless there's some questions. Other than two points that I would like to make is, the district implemented GASB statement 87, which is a new accounting standard.
Yes, GASB is the governmental accounting standards, or that sets the rules that they all have to follow when you present your financial.
So the end result to the district is they recorded a lease receivable, and this thing called deferred inflow related to leases. So the lease receivable is what you will receive over time. It's the present value when the lease was made, or at the date of implementation, which for the district this year would be July 1st, 2021. Then as that gets paid down, a piece of that is gonna be interest, a piece of it is principal that gets applied to that receivable. So other than the interest revenue, so that takes care of that piece. Then on the other side, you have the deferred inflow resources that get split out over the life of the lease, and that's how you record the lease revenue now, and so you'll record an equal amount every period, essentially, except in the year that you started, so you straight, what we call straight line that revenue over the life of the lease.
Okay, does the interest change, though, over time?
Yes, a- as the principal gets paid down.
As it goes down, then rate stays the same, but the amount would.
So think about the inverse of your mortgage payment. So.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah. So the payment.
Makes it real.
It's a good analogy.
So when you first start making payments, more of that's gonna be interest. When people start first paying you the lease payments, more of that's gonna be interest. At the end, very little of it, if it's gonna be interest, and most of it's gonna go to that principal. So very similar, just sort of.
Similar dynamic.
Yeah, looking on the other side of that. The other thing that I'd like to bring up, which isn't huge in the grand scheme of things for the district, but it is a little bit unusual, doesn't happen all the time, was that there was almost a $400 million contribution to PERS that was funded by a pension bond that was approved by the board. So, so that moved around some of those pension numbers as well.
From the not newsstand of y'all, like, everybody pretty, pretty.
Pretty well, but, but it was just something that's a little bit unusual. It doesn't happen every year, it happens about once every 20 years or so. So there's, unless there's any questions.
Good question. So where would, if we weren't looking at these documents, where would we have gotten the year-end sort of reconciliation?
We weren't looking, where were we, the year-end reconciliation?
Well, just like where we landed.
It, it is usually been relied on the audit, yeah.
Okay, so it's not like I missed something earlier?
Correct.
Okay, so since that's the case, I just wanna make sure that I'm reading this correctly. I'm going back to page 26. So it looks like we underspent $38 million in a host of categories, including instruction and support services, and that we didn't end up using 48 million of our contingency. So even though we had lots of discussion about it, and, so what did that mean that our, our contingent, where is our contingency? There was the whole, we're taking it down to 6%?
So, yeah, so right, leading into last year, or two years ago, but then the net result this year, we ended, we were forecasting to end last year at about $99.5 million. And now with the audit, and Cheryl, keep me honest, I believe we were at 98.6, I believe was like the, the net result from, like, our fund balance. So it was pretty close to.
So 8 or 9%, almost of the 10%.
Repeat that?
So our. So our policy goal is five to 10%, like ideally 10%. But we, if we ended up with 98 million, then we ended fairly close to 9%.
Yeah, yeah. So we were, this was with May, we were forecasting, uh, close to that, so that's, that's where we were. And I can go back and just double check the, the numbers against our policy that we have. I've got a clearer sense, but pretty much par, on par with what we were anticipating. Are there questions?
Just curious, from the, an auditor's standpoint, with all the federal money, um, just flowing through, which makes it unusual. Is there anything that as board members we should be looking for or asking about as we sort of get on the, the downside of the, the federal, federal funds? Are you reading national or state trends that you?
I think every, the national and state trends are more figuring out how to spend all the federal money at this point. The, I think the topics will change in a couple of years when that money does dry out. That will provide some interesting questions. If there is programs funded with that money versus one-time expenditures, that will be some challenges that some of the school districts will have to face.
So we should, if we're looking at areas of risk, we should be looking at things that are, um, one-time funds for one-time activities, not ongoing programs. That would be something to look for.
Yeah, there's, there's, and then just, there's a, a number of, just on the, how the funds are spent right now. We've had a couple of clients that had some issues with changes because most of the time they hadn't used federal funds for construction proj- projects. So different rules start kicking in when you start using federal funds for construction versus your normal operations, which a lot of school districts, I mean, fund a lot of instruction with federal funds. So those are operating expenses, so it's not going towards buildings and cars and those kind of things. And so as soon as you change that, the, the rules around how that money is tracked and the compliance requirements, once you start a project, they want to make sure that you keep track of said construction project, that you've done, um, certain things such as prevailing wage laws start kicking into, uh, effect. That may not be covered when you're just using it for, let's say, a teacher's salary. So.
So best practices, have you noticed, you know, if, are there best practices that we're looking for as well for those federal funds? I mean, I think they're, they're going to be drawing up.
Generally speaking, we have hewn pretty closely to the best practices laid out by, uh, Council of Great City Schools on the ESER funds. So for example, we have not invested any of our ESER funds in capital improvements. And we have, for the most part, not invested any of our ESER funds in, um, one-time staffing, uh, hires. So I, I think in our conversations about those federal funds, we do kind of continually revisit some of those best practices. But in answer to the original question, I would say one thing we need to be looking out for is just to, uh, be making sure that we're not leaving any money on the table as, uh, each of these different tranches of funds reaches their expiration dates. So, so far we have not, but, um, and I, I personally am, am assured that, uh, our CFO and our superintendent are well aware of when those sunset and what we need, how we need to put them to use for our students. But it's still something that we should be explicit about with the public and something that we should always have our eye on.
September 2024, it's obligated, and then there's this technical liquidation period that, uh, hopefully we get some, there's conversations in, in DC and trying to extend the liquidation period, which still need to obligate, but, uh, September 2024 is like the date to keep in mind.
And then is there like 180 day or 180 day?
There is, that's part of the li- I wouldn't necessarily say a grace period.
Liquidation?
But yeah, like trying to get into extending that liquidation period. So if you can, let's say, a contract for tutoring services or, or something along those lines, then so long as it has some September, September 2024, you then have X period to like liquidate these funds.
Okay, so it needs to be encumbered?
Yeah, that's a, yeah, that's a good way of thinking about it.
Like September, okay.
Yeah.
Although those conversations may end up getting a little traction because, uh, a lot of districts are having so many issues with hiring. So they haven't been able to deliver on the commitment they want to make to their students because they haven't been able to find the adults. So there's, um, so far there is, uh, uh, some receptivity to those kind of challenges.
But that's consistent, uh, with what I'm hearing from my peers around the country. And we've tried to remain really thoughtful and mindful about, here's our list of priorities and these are the different revenue streams and which one makes sense, right? If we're talking about upping one-time direct services like extended learning, summer programming, certainly makes sense. Having more robust wraparounds like counselors and social workers, student investment account in this front state is more perpetual, more stable. We don't want to be in this, you know, hiring, letting go, hiring, letting go. And even in some cases where we set aside money, it's like the most robust summer programming ever. It was hard to spend eight and a half million dollars because of staffing or appetite in some cases. But we invested five and a half million really carefully, you know, while I think on a menu of services that anyone who wanted to, that could. So, uh, you know, uh, it, we've, we, we have these conversations all the time. Like which trend, which trend makes the most sense for the activity and make available.
So the report says that we have a clean finding then. There's, actually, there's no finding. There's a clean report.
On the financial statements.
On the financial statements.
Yes. So moving through, um, I'll skip over the notes. Those just provide a lot more information and explain in more detail what's on the face of the financial statements, the numbers. We already touched on the supplementary information, so we'll flip past that in the interest of time. Then there's statistical information, which provides, a lot of it is over 10 years. There's some between this year and last 10 years. There's also some additional performance, um, information back there. All good information that just provides an additional context, um, for the district. And we flip all the way to the back. We get to our report on compliance and internal controls over financial reporting based on and out of financial statements performed in accordance with Oregon State Regulation.
Thank you.
It's the last two pages.
I think it is 134.
134.
Thank you. There we have two, uh, what we would call Oregon Minimum Standards by findings. Um, before we get into those, we make reference to the other reports. We also list out what we perform procedures over there. So deposit of public funds with financial institutions, are they with, uh, the state approved? Banks, are you, um, passing the budgets that are legally required? Have you not had too much people, too, too much funds in LGS, the local government's investment pool? That has a limits, so you haven't extended that. Also state school factors and, and all, and that's where the OMS findings come in. We took a sample of 60 students with more than 10 absences. There were, out of that 60, there was one student that was not appropriately withdrawn from ADM as required by state rules. The second finding is out of a sample of 60 teachers. It appeared that the district misreported teachers' experience for six teachers. So those are the findings that are being reported to the state. District staff is aware of these and.
Do either of those cause you concern for the nu- the number?
I wouldn't say that overall concern. It's definitely you would want it better. I mean, no findings would be better. In the grand scheme of things, this, these are not uncommon findings for, for school districts to have. These are not findings that are unusual for the district itself.
I just, I think we've had these.
Yeah.
I, I think they sound familiar, especially the teachers. And then, um, so the sample of 60 students, I mean, we're just inferring what the nu-.
Yeah.
Number is in a larger population. Same for, for teachers. Um, and so the district misreported years of experience.
Which goes into the funding calculation. So this is where the state wants us to go check the numbers that have been provided to them to make sure that when they calculate how much of the state's school fund and those types of things, that it's being calculated correctly.
Um, so are, when you get a finding like this, are you looking, are you digging any deeper then or increasing the sample size or how are you?
60.
Or does that just give you a number to report?
Yeah, it gives it, it gives us a number to report. It shows that there, there may be an issue there. 60 is one of our larger samples. That's also probably because you guys have more students and teachers than most.
And 60 gives you enough statistically too.
Should be statistically valid, yes.
So of course, we don't make more of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a whole nother set of questions. We rally up, you know? If the question's around years of experience, are we talking about service credit, building hire service? Are we talking about seniority in the district? Are we talking about TSPC's record? So, you know, we, we'll draw down into it, get, get an accurate sense of where the issue lies and if there's any corrective action on our part.
I just pulled up last year's report and we had the same two items, but we've actually gotten better because last year it says there were two students that weren't, and this year it says there were only one, so we're really better. And then last year for the teachers, it said there were four teachers where they, and we had less than that this year, so.
No, we had six this year.
We have six this year. Well, there was some last year that we couldn't find supporting documentation for, and then there was, I can't think of the number off the top of my head.
It's two.
Yeah.
The four for the documentation and two for the number of years' experience.
So.
So we got better on one, but not on the other.
That takes care of the big report unless there's any other questions.
Sorry, I'm sorry, the virtual, because, um, it's, yeah. Because they've already said that they, all the numbers are fine, so now I'm going to go to the numbers. So when you put together, um, next year's budget, when you list, I'm just looking at the 87 million, which is a pretty substantial underspend. Do you, when you state, like, here's what the budget was, do you state the actual, what the budget was or what the actual spend was?
I'm for, I'm thinking back to our conversations this past May and trying to keep it consistent. We had both a, this was our proposed budget, and we stuck to adopt it and adopt it. We were trying to compare, like, propose and adopt it, so we're trying to compare apples to apples versus actual expenditures. Uh, so I think for, as part of our budget planning conversations, looking at actual expenditures will be a key topic as we get into budget planning for next year. Particularly considering that we know there's certain ESER fiscal clips that we need to be aware of. So when we look at actual expenditures, or when we look at our budget, we want to look at actual expenditures to get a better sense of what's the reality of what's happening on the ground. To then assess, are there opportunities to then repurpose to support other, other programs? So getting into this fall, it's going to be a combination of both. We're, we're going to have to look at what we traditionally budgeted, but then also what's actually happening on the ground.
And the reason I ask is this issue of whether something is a, a decrease. Because it, if you were, say, this level of instructions, it was $15 million less than we closed in the budget, what our spend was. And so if you start with like, so say if you had something that was next year, 10 million less than the adopted budget. It would still be more, 5 million more than we spent last year?
And that's, yeah, that, that gets, I think, into the conversation of, do, is there, are, do you budget for something and hold up resources? Right? Some of this could just be because vacancies, we just couldn't hide it. There was an intent to bring people on board. And maybe the critical roles to support critical functions, but these are then circumstances outside our control. But we are budgeting, so there is a question. We are holding resources to support X activity. So then the question becomes the trade-off. Do we, if we are having difficulty or trend shows a certain underspend, do we release those resources from a budget to then do something else with it? And releasing those resources from a budget could be less FTEs or less smaller contract or something along those lines that would then, um, behoove us to then have that conversation around like actual versus budget.
But it meant that we had a position, for example, take the position, that we had it open all year. Like we budgeted for it and we didn't fill it the entire year.
So like in that sense, is that the question, like, what will we do then?
Well, no, I'm just saying, but I mean, that would be.
Possible.
That would be a lot of positions to be, if, if they were positions, a lot of positions that were open for an entire.
Yeah, so.
And there were, there were some, absolutely. When we were in the spring, revisiting our audits and, and, um, you know, in one department under my portfolio, um, had something like, you know, double digits of, of positions that just, despite efforts and level of HR and trying to recruit, we're not able to. So definitely that, that would represent part of where you see the underspend.
So our internal interrogation is always, what's the intended activity or priority? What kind of capacity do we need to carry forth that activity with quality? And if we didn't find people or didn't get off the ground, is it still something you want to prioritize? Is there a no way to tackle that gap? Is it a key position, right? We budgeted for a deputy superintendent of business operations. Do we not need it? Do we keep working as a superintendent, playing two roles? Do we split it up into two other, like, using the questions for, as an example?
Do you have a deputy more work to do? By the way, there's two staff positions that are listed as vacant that are now filled miraculously.
Oh, yeah, the chief academic officer and chief of schools in the first few pages, first couple of pages.
This says as of June 30.
As of June 30.
And you'll see some names in there of people that are gone now.
The snapshot.
Yes, the snapshot at that point in time.
Excellent. Well, thank you. And thank you to the finance department for another clean audit. The sixth, sixth in a row, I believe, since, I think since 1617?
During this entire administration.
It does line up quite nicely. Um, so just congratulations to the department and staff.
We should probably continue on with the single audit.
With the single, oh, are we, okay, we're going to move to the, no, we're not.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the next one is the report on requirements for federal awards, also known as UNFOM guidance. So this is all the federal money. Going to the first report with our letterhead on it, which is the, um, report issued in accordance with government auditing standards. So this is a report on internal controls over financial reporting. There is no findings, no. There is no findings, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the district's internal controls that we have identified, so that is good. The next report, which is just immediately following that, is the report on compliance for each major program, report on internal controls over compliance, and report on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards required by Uniform Guidance. This report had a similar change to our independent auditors' report that we started with. Just we moved the opinion up to the top and reordered and expanded some other information within there. Substantively, not a whole lot of changes beyond that. In our opinion, the district complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements for each of the major federal programs for the year under audit, so that is good news. There were no findings identified, no internal controls over compliance, or no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses identified for internal controls over compliance. And the report on schedule of expenditures of federal awards, in our opinion, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards is fairly stated in all materials respects in relationship to the financial statements. So all good stuff, all clean, all unmodified, all good things. The next is the, is the actual schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And on here, this lists out all your federal programs and the money that was expended during the year. It's worth noting that last year was about 67 million, this year it was about 95 million. Most of that increase came from the Education Stabilization Fund, also known as ESER, and Child Nutrition Cluster, so your nutrition services, your federal awards for that. Next are some notes with some additional detail. Then we have the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs. This is a good summary of pretty much everything we've talked about so far today. It goes over financial statements, what the opinion was there, internal controls over financial reporting, internal controls over major programs, it lists out the major programs, so these are the programs that we audited. So we, as major programs, we audited the Child Nutrition Cluster, Title I Grants to Local Education Agencies, Student Support and Academic Enrichment Programs, and the Education Stabilization Fund, which is the overarching program once again for ESER, just because we like to call things multiple things. And then it then goes on to say that there were no financial statement findings to be reported and no federal award statements to be reported. So that covers the small report, so a lot of paper to save.
A lot of good looking reading for everybody, thank you for this.
So in the annual budget, there's, it's a combination of funds, but also FTE, which must be a requirement of the state budgeting. Well, but the audit only looks at funds, not FTE, I can see in the FTE in here, so it's just, it's an audit of the.
Dollars, you're just looking at dollars. There is something to go on FTE back.
In the statistical section, yeah, yeah, there's some, somewhere back there. Page 127.
Sorry, I didn't get through that in my skim. 126, 127, 128.
So thank you. I do want to shout out the Child Nutrition Cluster in this smaller audit. What's it called, the single audit, the Title I Grant, Leslie Adal and Dr. Kometro Jefferson, Child Nutrition Department, Whitney Alisick, for passing a clean.
And for being resourceful and hard-reading.
Very much so.
And I'll add also, Title I is a very complex grant to audit with lots of compliance requirements. So to have that one be audited and have no findings, it's a great achievement.
Shout out to Title I, yes, the grant, people that know that. I think that we're done with the business of the day.
There is a letter as well.
Is, is, I didn't see the letter.
One more thing.
That's one more thing.
We're, we're not in a hurry.
I don't know if they got.
Oh, maybe you didn't.
I don't think we did. But so we understand that this is not, this is a draft.
Yes, yes.
That there's no substantive that we know of.
It'd be a huge shock if there weren't any changes at all.
Everybody will be shocked and that the changes that we would expect would be page numbering, grammatical errors, et cetera.
Exactly. The period was forgot somewhere, dollar sign was left off, some things like that.
Well, thank you very much.
Of course. I would like to thank Tracy, who understands my mind, practically, and Cheryl, and all of the financial staff. Because as Dan said earlier, we couldn't do this without their help.
And substantial, I'm sure, cooperation.
Huge, huge amounts of effort. In addition, oh, I guess they're doing some other work on the side, keeping, keeping things running on a day-to-day basis.
That's their day job, it'd be their day job.
I heard that we had problems missing, filling some positions. Could we maybe, looking forward, like a portion, a larger part of the budget to potential recruit salaries to encourage applications?
So there is an ongoing effort to increase our recruitment efforts. Everything from partnering with external partners to recruit, to looking at providing hiring bonuses, referral bonuses for specific critical roles. So there are a lot of efforts going on to support that.
It's a big important topic.
It's not got lost on us, yeah.
College enrollments and education are also way down. The candidate pools will exist, so we, we're certainly advertising everywhere. We're hitting job fairness conferences, recruiters are everywhere in front of prospective candidates. It, it's focused about choosing fields these days. You can imagine why, it's been a source of a lot of partisan front work. And so, and all of us in public, I think you're seeing a drop in these candidate pools. But we have lots of grow-your-own efforts, we're supporting and eliminating hurdles for classified to become certificated, you know, et cetera. It's a big important topic, we should make some time for updating.
For what it's worth, it's not an issue just with public education. I think every one of our government clients is having problems filling positions and actually in the accounting profession.
We're very proactive as we can.
And then the demographics are somewhat against us, we're not at a replacement level of population growth. Plus, there seem to be a lot of people choosing to stay home for a variety of reasons right now, so it's not a unique problem.
Yeah, and we're not the only school district, even in the region that's in the same boat, that are also recruiting from a similar pool. So, you know, the competition is really high, not to, you know, it's a, it's a big problem. But we're seeing it in so many industries, I mean, just across the board.
Yes. The, the economy is heading into recession, like even large tech companies have laid off lots of people. So I don't know how that will affect public office and public jobs, but we might have to be a bit careful with expenditures in the future. Yeah, I think what it looks, and even some of the charts there, and you pointed this out earlier, enrollment's down 3,500 students, but we have more employees than before. So at some point, we made a conscious decision, locked true up. So we made that deeper investment to maintain FTE. And so we knew we were gonna be heading for a potential cliff. So for us is, how do we find more efficiencies to hold on as many folks been providing direct services to students? We continue to try to sort of aim at that, but at some point, you can't maintain the same level of personality in the organization. It's hard to make the case, we don't have all the students.
Thank you for your question, I think we're adjourned.
Thank you.